Okay, it is six thirty. We'll call this meeting of the select board to order on October fourth, twenty one at six thirty P M. We'll have a roll call vote.
Ms. Ackerman.
President.
Ms. Bates.
President.
Mr. Dane.
President.
Ms. Escobedo.
President.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, President.
Okay. Three, the consent agenda.
So move to approve the consent agenda, which this week includes a town accountant warrants of September twenty seventh, twenty twenty one and October fourth, twenty twenty one, as well as a gift acceptance from his presence Christian Fellowship, a gift of one thousand dollars to the Council on Aging Gift Account.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Bates.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, aye.
All right, next we will have the town manager's report.
I good evening, as just at the beginning, I'm actually traveling this week, so did not put in a written report. And my understanding from checking in with Kate is that it was a, it's been a pretty quiet week, so not much to report this week.
Okay, very good. And Chair's remarks, I don't have too many. Our next meeting will be October eighteen. And we're going to have a focused meeting, as you know, working on committees and the volunteer process. I'm going to try to arrange to have that meeting live. For one reason, cases are declining now with COVID. Well, there's several reasons, so watch, watch, stay tuned, we might be doing that meeting live. October twenty fifth. I will be out of the country and Matt has graciously agreed to chair that meeting. We will now go on to the next item, which we're actually going to skip, which is adopting the twenty twenty two special town meeting calendar. We are not quite ready, we have a few more odds and ends to wrap up and we'll be doing that sometime in October, we'll be adopting that calendar. Our next item, we're running kind of early, but I do see Liz Rust is here. And I'm going to be talking about nine thirty Main Street Habitat House and then the three sixty seven Commonwealth Avenue. Liz, are we waiting for anybody else or are you the main presenter on these?
So definitely on the nine thirty Main Street, I'm the main presenter there and then I'm going to be joined by Jennifer Polito and Rick Eifler for the Commonwealth Avenue piece.
Great, I see Jennifer Polito is here. So let's proceed with nine thirty Main Street.
Right, so nine thirty Main Street, this is the Habitat House and I want to extend my thank you to two members of the select board that that came and helped build on Saturday. I think we had a good, a good day, the weather cooperated, we had some good housing bonding experience between the foundation and the CHDC and the select board and the families who are going to be joining there. So this is a standard part of the affordable housing process with the LIP program, that's the local initiative program. And this is the regulatory agreement that provides and ensures that the units will be affordable in perpetuity. So it's an agreement there and then there is a form of the deed writer, which shows what will be used when the units are actually purchased and closed, so there'll be two families. And at that point, once the units are sold using that deed writer is when they become eligible for the subsidized housing inventory. So this is a standard form and this is done with every local initiative program and you've seen these before you as the board, maybe not you as individuals having not maybe been through this process, but there's no concerns that that I have. And it really is to protect the affordable housing restrictions in perpetuity and to ensure that the all the conditions are there to be complied with.
Okay, thank you, so Liz, is there anything different? It does look like the standard form, is there anything special? Any changes from the standard?
No, the form is really a fill in the blank and so, so that's what's been done here. And you saw way back when this was presented to the state, quite some time ago, maybe a year, the red line version of it, that when the LIP application, in order to submit it to the state, it comes first to the select board for your endorsement. And so you saw the draft at that point and this is again the very standard form, so there's nothing unique about it, no special conditions.
Okay, questions from board members, Henry?
Yeah, I think there is one element that is, that is not quite standard and that is that it is two condominium units. And there are no condominium documents. And so I wanted to know how that was going to work and who was going to provide the condominium documents? And how that was going to be, how that was going to be working into the process, is that the responsibility of Habitat or is that the town or where does that come from?
So it comes from Habitat, Habitat will be setting up the condominium, the master deed and the declaration of trust. And they have provided that as information to DHCD, but it's not for the town's, not a party to that. So it's not before you for this affordable housing portion of the the program, but but that's very much a part of the overall project unit, unit establishment.
And and is my understanding correct that if someone who buys one of these units wants to sell it, that it becomes a responsibility of the town to either buy the unit or to find a buyer for it, or it would then go out of our affordable housing stock, is that correct?
Well, so the the town is the monitoring agent and one of the responsibilities of the monitoring agent is to find an eligible buyer and that logic is described in the regulatory agreement. The town shares that monitoring responsibility with DHCD. And these units are affordable in perpetuity, even if an eligible buyer is not located. So they have provisions for what they call an ineligible buyer. So that if you couldn't find a buyer for some purpose, you could sell it to to someone else who's not eligible just to continue and that that person is subject to the affordable housing restriction. Affordable housing restriction is in perpetuity, stays with the property in perpetuity and the units would not be lost in terms of affordable housing inventory for that purpose.
And and is it our responsibility then, is it we run a lottery? Is that how we work it to find if there's more than one potential buyer? We run a lottery to choose who would be the lucky owner?
Yes, and we, that's one of the services that we do, resale agent services that we provide for the town, the town gets a two percent resale fee for that. And I I think that we sometimes think of those as offset fees to the R H S O fee. And so it's standard to whenever affordable housing units are resold in Concord, it's a standard process for that. So we set up the the application period, after ten days, we do a lottery and then then proceed to to I don't know, show the unit go into purchase and sale and go through the closing process.
Is is that the same arrangement as we had for the Emerson units where a few months ago, we had to come up with about a hundred thousand dollars to make up the, make up the difference between the selling price and the purchase price?
So the resale process is the same in terms of finding a buyer? The difference there is those units were created when the deed restriction was not in perpetuity and didn't have these same provisions. So this particular form of deed writer was established in two thousand and six and have addressed many of the situations, so the Emerson Annex units late eighties, I think something like that, they were created. So that's why buy down funds were needed for those, but the process of finding a buyer is the same process.
But we would not then be called upon to come up with additional funds on a a sale transaction of either of these units, is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, there there might be some incidental costs for renovation or update, I think that we've seen situations like that, even if the, you know, the perpetual control is not ending.
Some, there's lots of choices to that exactly, Matt. You know, there's a, the CHGC runs a small grants program that have been used to to do some of those repairs and
Yeah.
Yeah, so those, yeah, but in general, in terms of buying down, aside from the any kind of capital or renovations, in terms of buying down the purchase price to continue the affordability, these units would not be subject to that kind of requirement or or opportunity for the town.
Okay, are there other questions, Linda?
So Liz, thanks for all the work that R H S O has done in pulling all this together. One, just additional question, if we know, since Habitat will be defining the condo arrangement, I'm wondering if we at least have a window on what that looks like? You know, either, yeah, okay.
Sure, and I can, anyone can be involved with that as they wish.
Okay.
We did see what the
So I guess, I guess my question is, are there additional costs to the homeowners related to the definition of the condo association in this case?
But not to the definition, but there'll be a small condominium fee for, in a bank account that would be set up. So, you know, for common elements like the roof or the, you know, whatever's common to to the condominium owners. And so they'll go through and they'll do a budget, just like any condominium and and decide the appropriate fee and Habitat will help them get that set up. But I, you know, Concord especially has a number of small condominiums, you know, maybe six or less units that are self managed and and many of them are a hundred percent affordable and they're always a challenge for the owners, I would have to say. In fact, we're going to be doing some tailored training for small condominiums, just to assist those groups and how to budget and maintain and make sure that they have enough reserve in their accounts and and so forth. So there are particular situations for that, but yeah.
Henry, could you hold on?
I'm holding.
Okay.
So just, just one quick follow up question, Liz. Just to be clear for everyone, so I assume that whatever that fee is, that that's included in the affordability standard that for these occupants?
Yes.
Yeah, so thank you.
Okay. Right, Henry, go ahead.
I can't emphasize too strongly that when you have a condominium which has just two owners, that the provisions dealing with disagreements between the parties are critical to the management of the organization. Essentially, you're become an unwilling partner with the person who becomes the owner of the adjacent unit. And if there are differing preferences or priorities, it it frequently becomes a divisive issue if there isn't a very, very effective means to resolve any disagreements between the two unit owners.
Okay, Susan.
Along those lines is with the, would it necessarily be a fifty fifty ownership or would it be based on square feet? I mean, that's one way to that's one tool to have one, to have it not, everything have to be agreed upon, although that's not ideal. I just wondered, since there's a, I think a two bedroom and a three bedroom unit, whether that would be the case.
It's currently written as a fifty fifty split.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? I see one question from the public panel, can you be very brief?
Emma Liddrit, thirteen Concord Green Unit Two, I'm just interested in whether it will be fossil fuel free? And if there will be any what the infrastructure for energy, if will it be all electric heat pump? Which would be very beneficial, especially for this kind of building, since the costs of maintaining it are far lower.
I do not know the answer to that.
Is there anything to encourage that to happen?
Well, we will ask Stephen and his staff to find out and get back to you.
Thank you.
We do not know that at this time. Are there any other questions on nine thirty Main Street Habitat House Regulatory Agreement?
Derek, can I ask Pam, just to, just to, just restate the question, just to make sure I I got it.
I think she wants to know if they are fossil fuel free, if there are electric pumps.
Are the buildings going to be all electric heat pump for cooling and heat? As we have stated in town meeting that the town wants for all new construction. It's especially important since doing that is cheaper than doing conventional like natural gas buildings. Also, it provides the owners with cooling, which is going to be even more important as the, as as climate change hits us.
Oh, I got it, thanks Pam, I'll look, I'll look into it.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion?
Yes. So move to authorize the town manager to execute the DHCD Local Initiative Plan Regulatory Agreement for the Habitat duplex at nine thirty Main Street.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Ms. Ackerman.
Stephen had a question.
Well, we're, I I do see that now, I'm sorry, I didn't see that before, we're right in the middle of voting right now, so let's hold off on that. Yes.
Okay, Ms. Bates.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, aye.
Okay, this agreement passes unanimously. Stephen Bader, do you have a very quick question or about this item? Okay, go ahead.
Very brief, the boilerplate seems to suggest that the selection has not been done, whereas in this case, the owners have been selected, so should that be revised in the boilerplate language? Or alternatively, maybe Liz can tell us that all of the boilerplate language was satisfied when the new residents were selected a year ago.
Yes, it is the format, so that the marketing plan and the approval to go forward under the approved marketing plan by DHCD was done prior to any selection or marketing of the units.
Okay, thank you. We will move on now to three sixty seven Commonwealth Ave. Our home funds and we have here Liz again and Jennifer Polito and we're waiting for one more person, but I think we can proceed.
No, I think Rick Eifler's here, but he's under Merrill Kamo's name.
Ahah. I see you, Rick, thank you for
There we go, right, so let me turn it over to Jennifer and they'll call on me as needed.
Good evening, everyone, I first wanted to thank you all for having us tonight. I also want to introduce myself, my name is Jennifer Polito and as of mid June, I am the new executive director at the Concord Housing Authority. All these names sound so familiar and I've chatted with many of you, so it's nice to put some faces with some names. Just a little bit of the background on the project at Commonwealth Ave. The town of Concord purchased a parcel of land for the purposes of creating a recreation area. By town meeting vote, a small portion of the parcel was designated for affordable housing. A feasibility study was performed and concluded that the parcel proposed is not a buildable lot unless combined with existing Concord Housing Authority property. In two thousand and nineteen, the estimated cost to build a two bedroom unit was three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. With today's rising costs of labor, materials and building in general, the estimated cost is a little over seven hundred and seven thousand dollars. To date, we have secured four hundred sixty six thousand, three hundred and forty five dollars committed from different sources, including the Town Affordable Housing Fund, the Town of Concord CPA, the Town of Concord Home FY twenty one Funds and Consortium Home Funds. Even with the generosity of these contributors, we are still short two hundred and forty thousand dollars. We are coming here today to ask for consideration of a hundred and forty thousand dollars in town meeting appropriated affordable housing funds as well as approval to apply for a hundred thousand dollars of additional home funds. I'm new to this project, but Rick Eifler, our chair, has been really spearheading this, so I'm going to hand it over to him.
Hi, Rick Eifler, fourteen Pleasant Street, Chair of the Concord Housing Authority. I'm not sure if I have the ability to share, but we'll see. So I have some, some of the documentation that might help you with some information on this project, if you're not familiar with everything. This is a little more information on the history of the budget for the project. In April nineteen, when the town was considering transferring this property to the Housing Authority, there was a feasibility study done that came up with an initial budget for the construction, hard cost constructions of the project. And that was done by GPI, the same engineering firm that's doing the Duro property. And that budget became the basis for our first application to community preservation for funds. And also was was, I guess, the basis that we used for applying to the town for fifty thousand dollars of free cash affordable money to start our design process on the, on the project. Engineering, architectural money, engineering money, permitting money. The, at the time, we felt that the house construction costs looked a little low. And so we added in fifty thousand dollars to the house construction cost at the time. We added in a contingency and so between the soft costs that we came up with, funding by the town, we came up with the need for three hundred thousand dollars from community preservation and both of those, the select board approved the fifty thousand dollars and community preservation approved the three hundred thousand dollars and we had three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to work with at that point, so we hired, we went out looking for architect, hired an architect and began the design process. Same is true of the engineering. And by March of, by early twenty twenty one, some RFPs came out for home fund money. So two years had gone by, it seemed like a good idea to go for some additional funding for this project, looked at the budget. We did not yet have complete architectural engineering plans, so looking at the budget ourselves and figuring out where we could use money. We, I apologize in advance, I've got service dog in training, which is not my usual one, I don't know how to behave during all of this. So if you see me moving around, because there's a dog right next to me. So we upped the soft costs to cover a few things, a contingency, mostly contingency increase in architectural and design funds to cover some additional work that was needed for for NRC work, environmental engineering for a twenty one E report for the home funds and the contingency money. And we increased the house cost construction numbers to seem to make more sense with where construction costs were going at the time. And came up with a new budget for the total project costs of more than a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars more than than we started. We were approved for the, for the home funds and that became our budget. We completed the architectural design and the architect then, well, yeah, the schematic design for the project, enough for pricing. Put that, he put that out to his estimator, came back with PMNC, that's the estimating company that he put it out to. And they came back with a very detailed estimate that was broken, broke out the overhead and profit, that's why these two, two lines appear here, so some of these numbers may not match up accordingly, but we tried to match it up as best as we could, in case you wanted to track, track the budget at all. But the real story is that the budget is now over seven hundred thousand dollars for the project, which creates an additional need and we are asking for a hundred and forty thousand dollars more out of the town's free cash money. And within, we also have an opportunity for more home funds. We don't know what we will get, but we are trying for a hundred thousand dollars in the next rounds, round of home funds. So that's a little bit on the, on the budget, a little more information on the budget. The, this is the site plan for the project, if some of you aren't familiar with it, this is Commonwealth Avenue down here, Bruce Freeman Rail Trail over here, Warner's Pond up here. The current, current construction road into the Duro Park project is here, if you've driven by, there's a big construction fence across this entire thing. The, there it is, right there, as it looks, pretty much today. The existing plan of the existing house is here, the post house is is quite a bit smaller, it's a tiny little two bedroom house. Which makes the seven hundred thousand dollar project cost seem kind of unbelievable, but there it is and I have the entire application here, if anybody has any questions about any piece of our application for zoning board of appeals or the natural resources and this is a little more information from the architects plans, again, the existing house plan here, new house plan here, the first floor anyway. And the front elevation, the existing house and the front elevation of the new house, the other plans, second floor plans or basement plans are here as well. And that's pretty much our project. Try to keep it brief, so you can ask some questions. And Liz Rust has more information about the home fund process as well.
Thank you very much, Rick, that was really good to go through the budget in detail, I definitely good understanding of it. Now, I guess you can stop screen sharing now. Are there questions from the board, Susan?
Yeah, thank you, Rick, for that very clear presentation. My question is, the hundred and forty thousand that you're asking from town funds, you said free cash, but I just want to clarify, I think you mean from the money that we segregated in the past three years for affordable housing for that fund?
Yeah, yes, yes, that, I guess originated from free cash and went to the
Yeah, yeah, okay, and Liz, do you, I know I've asked you this before and you've answered, how much money is is uncommitted still in that fund, do you have an idea?
Yes, right now, with no changes, you know, we have talked about possibly making some amendments, but right now there is six hundred and thirty five thousand dollars of uncommitted funds.
Okay, and then my second question is about the home funds. What, I mean, how, what's the likelihood that you'll be able to, I know you can't say with certainty that you'll get a hundred or is that in the range of what people, I know it depends on what's not claimed from year to year, but is that a typical, is that an ask that has been granted in the past, that magnitude, that I'm just trying to get a sense of where it falls in the, what they often do?
So the, the RFP goes out once a year and it's a, it's the pot of money that represents all of the, you know, funds that have gone through their exclusive use period and in that pot of money right now is a hundred and seventy six thousand dollars, so that's the total RFP amount. So I don't know yet what other projects might be looking for that. It's a, it's not very much money, so it's really would be gap funding for any project. I mean, it's not enough to actually do any project by itself, so it's really too I mean, it's not enough to actually do any project by itself, so it's really to, to leverage other funds. Last year, the Housing Authority got eighty-eight thousand, whatever the number was, something forty-five. Everything that they asked for, and there were other, two other projects that were also asking, and so the consortium was able to satisfy some of each person's requests. So I don't know if that'll be the same this year. So I think whether it was said or written in the memo, like if the a hundred thousand dollars does not come through, either the budget would get tweaked or the group would come back looking for that gap of what the home funds did not provide. So let's say the home fund said, no, you can't have a hundred, you can have seventy-five, and you couldn't find twenty-five thousand out of the budget, maybe come back for another twenty-five, a request for twenty-five additional from that affordable housing pool of money. Thank you, I don't know.
Thanks.
But there are, I think that Rick, Rick might mention that there's probably a little bit of play in that, it's not a bid number. So it's, it's, it's best, best estimate now. So maybe depending on what the home funds come in at, you know, there might be some opportunity to, to tweak some things.
Okay, thank you. Henry?
Allusion was made to this, but I, I find seven hundred thousand dollars plus for a one thousand square foot, two-bedroom home, which comes to over seven hundred dollars a square foot as being incredible. Without, and this is without any land cost. So that this house, if you put in a few hundred thousand dollars for land, which, what is your cheapest lot in Concord, might be half a million dollars. This would make this house, this affordable house, a one-point-two-million-dollar house, at least based on the value of the real estate and the construction cost. Does that, doesn't that kind of give you a pause about the project?
Liz, you want to respond to that?
Right, I just would say two things, one is that this is unbuildable, so I don't think you could price it like market rate. You know, without the house next door, I mean, you, you couldn't really sell this off and, and build a home on it, it's really too small.
I'm not talking about I'm not talking about marketability, I'm talking about value as to
In terms of
What you're getting, what you're getting for the money.
Sure, sure, the value of the land, that's all I was just commenting on. And then the other part is what you're getting is a perpetual, a unit of perpetual low-income rental housing. So that's the other side, so, but your point is well taken and it's one that I know that the Housing Authority and, and, you know, also
Let me put it to you another way, if there was an existing home that was available for sale and you could buy it for one-point-two-million dollars to provide one or two affordable housing units, would you do it? I mean, we did talk about this a couple of weeks ago about the, another piece of land, and the question came up. You know, are we willing to buy land for affordable housing at market prices? And here, we're not buying the land at market cost, but we are essentially creating affordable housing at one of our full market prices, our full market cost.
So, and just one last point, and then I'll, I'll stop. The other thing that, aside from just the COVID increases with construction and construction costs, this is a public construction project. And so that public procurement and public construction really will drive your costs up by, some people would say forty percent, but definitely thirty-five percent. So different from, you know, a different kind of developer, private developer, even CHDC that's not obligated to develop under those conditions, you know, would, would reduce the costs.
Thank you, I heard that, yes.
Right, okay, Linda?
So, is it, I think it's true that the town is going to get two SHI units from this project, is that correct?
That's our plan, yes, we do not have final approval on that, but that's our plan is to turn these into local initiative units that would be approved by DHCD for local initiative units that are qualified for the SHI.
And then, if I could just finish, and that's related to the fact that you've had to combine these two lots for this project, is that correct?
So the current house is not currently on the SHI. So our hope is that since the properties are combined and it becomes a single property, that both units would qualify for the SHI, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I, I do, thank you, Terry, sorry to keep adding, that that is probably going to be predicated on when a new tenant moves into that second unit. They often won't add something to the SHI if it hadn't been marketed under an approved marketing plan, just like we talked about with Habits. So there might be a timing issue of getting that second unit on the SHI, but the application to DHCD will go in with both units.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I understand this, I, I see other people a little confused too. So right now, neither of the two units counts on the SHI. And if we do this second unit for the seven hundred thousand, we will apply for both units. And we will have a plus two. But if we don't do this three-sixty-seven commat, can we still apply for three-sixty-five commat to be an affordable unit, or we cannot?
I think that's possible, yes.
Okay. Related to that, since everybody knows that prices are really through the roof with the supply chain right now, what would happen if we wait and possibly prices will go up, but maybe they will go down? Is there, what would be the harm in waiting?
I think we pretty much are waiting, the, the Duro project is, we can't build this house until the Duro Park entrance project, you know, the phase one is complete and we have a new access road into Duro Park. So the earliest this project would be built would be next summer, something like that, so the bidding would take place in the spring, I would guess. So we probably have a six-month wait built into this already. I think, I, I think it would be a mistake not to at least bid it, then, when, when we know there's, we have a window for building it.
Let me, let me rephrase my question. Can we apply for the home funds and bid the project? But not vote tonight to do the transfer of the hundred and forty thousand. And can we wait on that portion of it?
I think we'll miss our, miss, we would miss the opportunity for the hundred, for, for this hundred thousand, if we don't have approval for the rest of the money.
Right, the home funds can't be submitted showing that hundred and forty thousand gap. And then the home funds, the last home funds that were voted in March, the eighty-eight thousand, they have a two-year commitment date on them. So you'd really have to, to move forward, like you couldn't wait for longer than that period of time. So they give you some window, and there's some exceptions to that, but they want you to, you know, once you, you've, once they've allocated the funds, they really want you to use them.
Okay, Susan?
Yes, just one more question, the existing home is an older home, it was built some years ago, I, I'm guessing. And my question is, when, when the time comes, or when you, assuming this that, you know, the desire is to convert that to a affordable unit, there, I'm sure there are going to be costs in, in bringing that up to whatever kind of standards are applicable, or, you know, just updating it. And I don't, I wonder if anybody's thought about that, because we, we spent a hundred thousand on the Emerson unit, and I understand that part of that was for the buy-down, but it was also, there was a fair amount of money just for getting it painted and kind of up to speed for resale. I mean, I don't think you can ignore that, I guess is what I'm saying, and it'd be good to know what you're expecting.
Liz? Yep, so of the hundred thousand, just to clarify that eighty-five thousand was for the buy-down and fifteen thousand was window replacements. So for this, yes, there's been a home inspection and a number of items that the Concord Housing Authority maintenance folks have worked through. So there's no pending issues from there, and that was really considered right up front when it was being considered to put both homes together.
We do need a new sewer line and, and we, we think we have, we have the budget, that we have that in this budget, in that utility budget.
Thank you.
Are there additional questions from the board?
What, what, didn't we vote on about, about five hundred thousand dollars recently for another house on Commonwealth Avenue? Am I confusing these, these projects?
Yes, I think, I don't remember another project on Commonwealth Avenue.
Is this the only, only project we have going on Commonwealth Avenue? And it was the one that we had, then it was the same one we discussed maybe a couple of months ago, and we needed additional money back then. I remember that this was a house that was supposed to be the, the, the construction cost was supposed to be about five hundred thousand dollars, is that, anybody recall that? Or we were talking about the same house as, as we're talking about now?
It may have come up in a previous meeting, just preliminarily, I'm not sure, I don't think it did, but it might have.
Isn't there something at like thirty-five B commat, or is that? Am I, I'm confusing that with something else?
That's a mixed use.
The new project?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't think there's, I'm not familiar with another housing project like this on commat, we have talked about another home, but it's on a Commonwealth Ave. And so maybe, Henry, you're transposing the two places, but they're not, they're not the same project, I'm not aware of anything else in that area.
Okay. Who else on the select board?
I just wanted to say, I mean, from my perspective, this, to create a, really, it sounds like a, one new unit, I mean, in that, yes, it sounds like we're going to get two, but we potentially could have gotten one of the two anyway, through a different process. For seven hundred thousand dollars, just doesn't seem sustainable to me as a process for creating affordable housing. And, and I just really struggling, you know, to, to support it at this cost. I mean, I, again, I think it's a beautiful design, I, I think for a two-bedroom standalone house, it's, it's a very cute, very nicely designed, flows well house. But, you know, at, at seven hundred dollars a square foot, it, it's above market price, and, you know, when, if we buy down units for, to SHI affordable, we would get more units or more bedrooms for sure than, than doing it this way. Now, I know we already have a deal that was, that we would carve a lot out of the Duro Park and, you know, that that's how we started, but at some point, that it just, you know, the finances start to make it very difficult to proceed. I, I guess, you know, when I look at, we have a trust fund for affordable housing and we may have other projects in the future, and if we use all the funds for a two-bedroom unit, you know, are, are, are we going to be in a good position to support affordable housing in, in town? So I, I'm still, I'm struggling, I guess, again, beautiful project, but the costs make it really hard.
Linda? You know, I appreciate your comments, Matt. I guess, I, I guess the thing that is troubling to me has to do with the fact that town meeting voted to a lot, a portion of Duro property for affordable housing. Had the lot size been buildable, there might have been more units coming out of that buildable lot. So I, I think in some ways, you know, the town, in some ways, has created a problem here.
Susan?
I'm following up on Linda's comment. I think that the assumptions that were made when that agreement was voted are no longer valid, is specifically the cost estimates. So I'm, yes, there may be some problem, but I think, I, I don't remember what the original numbers voted, but it seems to be this was pretty close to double what we thought.
Yeah, Terry, if I may, I think it's, that, that's a good point, Susan. And I guess I want to just, kind of, I guess, it may go without saying, but I think, I think Bear's mentioned that the strategy, the design, the plan, all of those things are, are, are good and have been in development for a long time. And it's very consistent with how, with how, with how the town approaches affordable housing. The only variable that kind of gives us pause is the cost, which is sort of outside the control of where we are. So, or, that's outside of our control. So I just want to kind of set, separate the two, that it's not, that, that the additional cost is really a reflection of market environment, not a change in our approach or, you know, flaws in the plan. I just want to make sure that's clear.
Right, I think Rick's explanation may be right there, that there are market forces that have changed. But I agree with Susan and Matt and Henry that this is a very expensive. When it was the original price that we voted, it was well within range and everybody was very happy to support it. And no one knew that these market forces were going to more than double the cost. And I, I think we really have to rethink it now. Liz, you wanted to respond?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that I think that, I mean, I, I totally appreciate what, all those points. Almost two hundred thousand dollars of this cost is coming from the home funds. So I don't know if that's a factor. So that while it doesn't change the overall project cost, it changes, you know, what local funds are being dedicated to the project.
That's a good point, that's a very good point, but I think we've had other projects that had home fund offsets as well. And I've been thinking about, you know, going forward. I think it was Matt said, you know, seven hundred thousand might not be a sustainable level going forward. We need to, if, if keeping above ten percent is one of our goals, we know we can't spend seven hundred thousand on every single we don't have that much money, so we have to be wise about. I don't know what, I, I'm thinking we should maybe even at some point discuss some kind of a limit. That maybe we have an opportunity with our new group, with the municipal housing trust, I don't know, I know this isn't on the agenda tonight. But like I said, when, when the price was in the three hundreds, that was very comfortable. And it's seven hundred, doesn't feel comfortable to me, so there's some limit that we might really want to be thinking about. Matt?
I just wondered, you know, when it came to hitting a really high bid for the public restroom facility at the park, you know, they had similar kinds of construction requirements as a public project. You know, they came up with a creative solution of using a modular unit to, to lower the total cost. And I just wonder, is there some, I mean, clearly it's a lot easier to source a public restroom facility than to source a two-bedroom bungalow. But, you know, are there creative solutions that, you know, could be used to bring down that per-square-foot cost? I, you know, again, we've spent money on design and, and it is a very tight site and, you know, it may not be feasible to try to find something like that. I'm just grasping at straws here, just how do we, how do we get at this?
Right, talk, talk to the architect about the possibility of manufactured housing, taking over the construction of, of this project and delivering three boxes to the site. I think it would be I think it'll be three boxes, first floor, main of that main box, second floor of the main box. And then maybe there'd be another box for, or two for the front, or that might have to be custom-built on-site because it doesn't really suit itself to that front portion, you know, that, that custom portion that makes this squeeze onto this tight little site. There's really no design flexibility in any of the setbacks on, on, in any direction. I mean, it's really up against setbacks in every direction. It's also a tight site to even set down the second modular unit while the first one's going in. I, I don't know if it's, if it's even feasible, and from what I'm told, there, there's not much hope that, that it would create a more affordable version of this. It could certainly be tried, but it may not get us anywhere. I also did wanna make the point that, that yes, the town voted to transfer this to the housing authority when the costs were estimated, much lower. But I, if you turn back the clock even a little before that, there was a town commitment when they purchased the Jarrow property to, and decided to tear down the original house, that they would replace that house. So I think there's a, a commitment here that maybe goes a little bit beyond just the town meeting vote to, to do this particular project. So you might wanna think about what your, what your project alternative is for, for the money that you would save from this, which is probably, well, three hundred thousand in CPC money and two, two hundred or so, a, a little less than two hundred in affordable money. Where you would do that unit to replace the one that would, you know, the Jarrow house that was torn down.
Right, right. I think, I think that's probably what we need to do to think it through some more. I guess I, I personally am not ready to support this tonight. Unfortunately, I'd like to see the house there, but maybe some brainstorming might come up with some kind of an alternative. I, I agree with Matt. I don't know what alternative we're gonna come up with, but you guys are creative people. You might come up with something.
If, if I could say one thing, it, it, it won't be the housing authority. We, we're establishing that we're an expensive way to build a, use a unit. And you will have to discuss it with the wider affordable housing community. And I, I do think you should be ready for reaction from them if you don't support this project.
Right, so I think that if we don't support it tonight, it doesn't mean that we're never going to support it. And it might mean that we're not ready to support it today, that we wanna have people take, take a look at it.
Can I, can I make a suggestion in that, do you think?
Yes, what, Henry and then Liz, and then I think we're gonna wrap up. Go ahead.
Can we ask, can we ask them to do what we hope the school committee is doing with the middle school? And that is, say, here's what our budget is, here's what we have to spend to the architects and say, you build us a house with two bedrooms that's gonna fit this budget. And, and see what, see what they could do. Also, I assume that nobody, that it is no longer feasible to do affordable housing on a turnkey basis, the way we built the BD Center, where you can actually reduce those, those public construction costs by having the construction done by, say, a nonprofit organization, perhaps the housing trust or some other, one of the several housing entities that we have in, in town that could build, build as private construction and then turn over as turnkey to the housing authority, the completed project. I know that's gonna take a little bit of legal maneuvering to do, but it's worth looking into because as, I think as Liz said, public construction costs probably at least twenty-five, thirty or forty percent more than private construction, and you get no value for that.
Right, okay, one final comment from Liz. We're gonna wait till, at the end. Go ahead, Liz.
Yep, so the home funds, that application process is due in two weeks. So I think we just sort of pull that so that those funds, we would not apply for this project. I think I'm hearing that. So just to let you know that when it comes back, you need, that those funds wouldn't be available. You know, there's always, you know, next year's home funds or, or other, but the application for those needed the vote tonight from your board.
Right, so we're, we're going to take a vote now. And so either we're going to have to decide to go forward and, and put in the one hundred and forty thousand. And then Liz will have to go ahead to apply for the one hundred thousand from the home funds. Or we're going to vote no, and we're not going to be able to apply for that. And we're going to rethink some alternatives. We've heard various suggestions tonight. I'm not sure where this will go, but, but I think that's where we're at right now. We have to make a decision.
Do we need to vote? I mean, I think I get a sense of the board. Someone could make a motion, but if no one makes a motion, I don't think that we have a motion.
Okay, if we don't have a motion, then Liz will not be able to apply also. Does anyone want to make a motion to go forward at this time? Okay, seeing none, I guess. Let's, um.
I'm very sorry not to be able to support it.
It's, it's such a great idea, and it's just not deemed to be affordable at this time. So let's see if we can give a rethink and come up with another plan. Thank you for all of your efforts. I'm sure you've all put a lot of work into this. And yes, I'm sure the housing community will be upset and maybe they can help us rethink how to do this in a more affordable way. Okay, thanks again. I think we're ready to move on to our next item, which is the loan application with the Massachusetts Clean Water. Oh, no, I've skipped one. Sorry. We have Jennifer here from the Concord Carlisle Community Chest to present the needs assessment. Hi, Jennifer.
Hi, Terry. Hi, everybody. Thanks for, thanks for allowing me to be here this evening. Can I have screen sharing to share a PowerPoint? Thank you. Just a second here. Great, everybody can see that, okay?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I do wanna say thank you also for approving the community chess proclamation to make October community chess month again this year, so thanks very much for that. I wanna start with a little bit, for those who may not be familiar with the Concord Carlisle Community Chest. We have been around since nineteen forty-seven, and our mission is more or less to do the same, to engage our community, to help our neighbors in need. And we, we're celebrating actually our seventy-fifth anniversary next year and are still, you know, working to, you know, meet all the human service needs for everyone in our community as best that we can with the support of our neighbors and our businesses. And to address those needs in a financial way, mostly, we grant funds to local nonprofit organizations through the raising of money throughout our year from individuals and businesses. And we grant out those funds to local organizations. This past year, we supported twenty-five nonprofit human service organizations with funding. And that accumulated to over fourteen thousand residents in both Concord and Carlisle from a variety of services, you know, ages from childcare and preschool all the way through elders across, you know, a variety of needs, being scholarship or transportation, many, many different resources and support. We had a special program last year because of the pandemic, which was the Conquer Together Business Fund that actually supported fifty-four local businesses, that had them with one-time grants to weather the storm of the pandemic, and hopefully it helped many of them stay in business and stay here in town because we know they're a vital part of our community. And then we also helped to support twenty individuals through scholarships or emergency assistance. It is a small area that we do support in our community for emergency needs and as things arise for, for individuals and folks. But I'm here to talk about a needs assessment that the community just decided to conduct this past year. And in twenty nineteen, we held a strategic planning session. And one of the important initiatives from that plan was to conduct a needs assessment of Concord and Carlisle. We felt that it was important to really understand and assess the needs in our two communities to not only understand what, what is currently being addressed through our own grant-making and to see as an organization, are we achieving the goals that we set out to do annually? But also to identify where there are gaps in the funding that we have and gaps that maybe of needs that are existing with our residents in the community. To have us then reassess and look at our current funding priorities and, and see whether we need to address those. But then also to ensure that we can continue our role in the community as, as a leader and community galvanizer around different issues that exist. So while COVID put a little bit of a kink in our plans to conduct the needs assessment earlier, we were able to start the, the assessment back in January of twenty twenty-one. It went for about six months, and we just honestly wrapped that up over the summer, and I wanted to be able to share it with, with the town and the community. The research reviews and analysis that was conducted in the past year was, we worked with a firm called Paper Crane Associates who were really wonderful to work with and able to flexibly work around the challenges of COVID. They conducted interviews from over forty stakeholders, including obviously staff and board and volunteers that are involved with the chest, but also community leaders, many, some of whom are on this call, as well as nonprofit leaders and other individuals in the area. And they also gathered data from many different sources, locally, regionally, state and federally for to think about the issues. The research was sort of looked at from two different angles. One by population, as you can see listed here on the left, who all live in our community, as well as by issue area on the right, mental health, affordable housing, transportation, food insecurity and affordability. And so I wanna share with you some of the findings that had come out of this, this research that's been captured. So what have we learned so far? And we, like I said, just recently been, you know, get, received this information from our consultants. And we've been working obviously closely with them over several, several months. But some key highlights that have come across to us are that mental health services are significantly inadequate. Probably comes as no surprise to many of you. They are impacting people on all levels. The demand for direct services, such as food and housing, have obviously been increased and impacted significantly because of the pandemic. Shame is actually a significant barrier for people accessing resources. And I will go into these more in the next couple slides. Our senior population do have a lot of support actually in our communities, but yet there are gaps where they need more. And we could hopefully be able to fill some of those gaps. The high cost of housing and living in Concord and Carlisle can lead to challenges in many different avenues for individuals and families. And folks who are new to living in our community, often, while they may end up here, often struggle to actually thrive, survive and thrive in our towns. And so just to sort of dive into these a little bit further, we'll look at it sort of from the population angle. Our seniors, you know, a great, good thing to hear is that they do have a lot of support. Both of our towns actually have a significantly high senior population and relative to the surrounding towns around us. A third of the population in both Concord and, you know, a little higher than in Carlisle are seniors. And so while we do have robust different programming through the Council on Aging, as well as some other organizations that support this, these, this population, they still have some needs, particularly around transportation. Which that, some of that includes services outside of town, like getting to doctor's appointments, et cetera. The housing affordability, being able to remain in their homes and Asian place comfortably, and then just normalcy in accessing other help that they might need. Mental health, as I mentioned, crosses all ages and spans, and particularly it is the highest need for our youth. And it is certainly very, very inadequate. It is, you know, we, we knew prior to COVID that mental health was an issue. It is not just local, it is statewide, it is national. And for our youth, it is even more so exacerbated and has impacted because of COVID. And I know that even the assessment that was done by Emerson Hospital pointed out some of these facts and their youth risk behavior survey that they conduct, I know on a biannual basis, had pointed out how much teenagers in particular have been impacted by the pandemic and how this has impacted the mental health of, of these individuals. Low-income community members who are, find they're, are in the community, whether recently or have been here for quite some time, may not reach out for services, and when they do, they are in almost an emergency support situation. And while there are some groups in town that do support emergency services, and, and the, the chest has some funds to do some of that as well, that we can help in those situations, but they don't often find that they're fully integrated into our community because there's such a high cost of living around many other factors, including just, you know, transportation, affordable childcare, you know, being able to, to get along with all the other nuances that exist in living in our, in our community. And there are organizations in, that support our community for people with disabilities, and they are fairly limited. And they are struggling, and I know one of the things that our consultants found was that they, they were really holding it together with, as I said, duct tape and bubble gum. Because the pandemic put a lot of pressures on their resources and for, as this population who are the over twenty-two, but many of them continuing to age and may not be able to remain in place, in living with their families. They are struggling in, in what comes next for them. Looking at some of these findings by issue area, and mental health rises right to the top, inadequate for so many across populations, seniors being another area, population that struggles with mental health because of isolation. And, and which clearly was impacted by the pandemic, but also those who are new to our community or have a harder time integrating into our community, mental health can be very much a struggle. I know I heard you speaking about housing before I joined, but the high cost of housing and living is a challenge, but also then makes folks feel like they don't fit in and they don't belong. And if someone is able to have a housing voucher and find a way of living here, all of the other pieces still make it hard to survive and thrive here. And that could be just being able to, you know, sign your child up for, you know, a class or, you know, provide, provide all the supplies that are needed or get to work. Because that, that is not easily accessible, which leads to transportation being a challenge for multiple demographics, whether you are living in low-income housing, you're part of the senior population, and, you know, there are only a few options to be able to get to doctor's appointments and other appointments, and how do you get there in the hours that are limited? But, you know, without a, you know, the, the commuter rail is limited in that, and sometimes it's not even accessible to be able to get there unless you live in certain parts of town. And that we do have a fairly strong system with different organizations that help with food insecurity. And I know many of them have been absolutely pivotal. And I know many of them have been absolutely pivotal during the pandemic. The, we have found that the access to ready-made meals, because we have not had in-person gathering in many respects during this time, has been actually very desirable for the elderly and for other, some other populations that can't get out into the community. So being able to continue to work on those and support those avenues is key. And I'm happy to talk a little bit more about that and have answered some questions in a moment. So a lot of information that we have gleaned here and are, you know, some are very large issues and some are that can be helped with financial support and some that are much bigger than certainly the community chess may be able to take on, but we hope that we can do with the support of the town and other organizations and groups who love to be able to do have some collaborative idea sharing. But what we're hoping to do and what we're doing right now is sharing out this information with, we've just had a meeting last week with our board, our ambassadors who are even former board members. And then obviously presenting here tonight was certainly the goal and being able to share with our community at large and have some other forums and avenues, we would like to be able to expand this information into the community. And we'll be certainly sharing nonprofits that we work with and then and those grantees about what we've learned. We actually have already been working the last few months, reviewing and assessing our grant programming. So we, you know, have a task force in, in the works right now, sort of assessing, okay, this is what we've learned and even the last pieces that were coming in in the last couple of months of what do we do with that? And how do we address our, our grant program? We are, we are not a funder that gives away millions of dollars a year, unfortunately, but with the money that we do grant, you know, we want to do it in the most efficient and effective way that is addressing the needs that are present today, twenty twenty-one and the next couple of years in the best way. So we are, we are looking at those programs and how do we restructure some things there. And then, as I mentioned, you know, I am open and willing to have lots of conversations around collaboration between nonprofits with us and you, the town and the chest with other funders to sort of really try to address some of these key gaps. Some of them may be able to be solved pretty easily and others may take several years or more to be able to to tackle. But we feel like it's an opportunity to, to, you know, work with other people on some of, some of these avenues. And I know that in the past, the chest has been, you know, we've collaborated on many different things with the town, certain positions that already exist in the town or have existed in the past. And I, I hope that this allows an opportunity for us to have some of those conversations on what may be on the town's minds that need addressing certainly in the future. Of course, we couldn't have done this alone by any stretch of the imagination. Our, you know, the community leaders who participated, we thank you very, very much. We, we had specific donors who funded this project. We wouldn't be able to do this without them being able to support us in this work or grantees who are provided their information and of course our staff and board. And that's where I want to stop for the moment and ask if there's any conversation or question and then go from there.
Thank you so much, Jennifer. I'm really struck by the themes that the needs assessment has uncovered in that they are, a lot of the goals that the select board is working on are the same themes such as affordable housing, transportation, DEI. How can we integrate everyone into the community so everyone feels that they're included? That's a DEI issue. And in Vision Concord, we're going to be having a focused meeting because one of the top things is to integrate all of our people economically and in all ways in the community. So these really fit into a lot of the things we're working on and I'm sure we'll be collaborating a lot in terms of our DEI committee, our transportation committee, affordable housing folks, got a lot, lot going on. So thank you. What comments do we have or questions from? Matt?
It seems like there's a evolution to more basic needs. I mean, mental health, food, security, affordable housing, people with disabilities. There have always been segments of the funding that the community chest has provided in the past, but it seems like those needs are are growing as a percentage of where the, I mean, reading between the lines where the community chest is likely to, to focus. And I do worry a little bit about that there, the community chest has also been instrumental in funding educational and cultural initiatives in town in the past, providing grants. And we really, you know, we don't, the, the funding for that, I don't know where else that's going to come from, you know? And, and I guess again, it's not because I don't feel that, yes, those other needs have increased, but it's going to be a real balancing act, I think, to, to continue to keep both the, you know, the early childhood education, the natural environment support that you've provided, the arts and humanities support where there's very little funding elsewhere in our town budgets. You know, how do we keep Concord rolling? I mean, I guess, you know, we shouldn't put it on the community chest, but in the past, the community chest has been quite a big factor in all of those things.
It's a great point, Matt. You know, we have always primarily focused on human service needs though, and, and really not so much around environmental or arts and cultural needs in the community. So sometimes there have been projects that maybe have cross-related with different groups and so we have funded some of those. And perhaps that's what you're referring to. And, and it's not to say that we still wouldn't look at them. I think that, you know, and that's honestly something that our task force has been talking about is, okay, do we segment funds, do we have a focus area for one year? Maybe there's a three-year plan around how we look at grant making for organizations. We don't have the answers to that right now. We're, we're, we're talking about that and, and it's, but this is helping to be guideposts for us of these are where, what people need now and today. And we need to address these and know we can't solve them all. We know we can't. These are larger than than our organization can handle and some of them are very, they're municipal issues and they're, they're national issues for that matter. But where can we make some inroads with these issues? And I don't disagree with you. I think all those things are really important personally. What other groups in town can do that or funders regionally can, can support some of those?
Yeah, I was just looking at your twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, you know, grants and just the listing of the grant recipients as well as your pie chart that just shows about twenty percent of the money, you know, roughly, I can't get the exact percentage, seemed to have gone to educational types of initiatives. So I guess that's what I was referring to.
Yes, education, absolutely. And those, those often it could be preschool scholarships or a certain programming within the school system that we've supported. And so I don't necessarily going away. Some of them are linked to economics, you know, maybe low-income families that need those scholarships in order to, to work. They need those preschool scholarships, their kids can go to, to go to school. So those still fall in that, in those buckets of support for low-income individuals to be able to then thrive in their families to, to stay here and be here. So if that's one piece of pie that they need is to have a preschool, a scholarship to attend preschool so that they can go to work, great, then we're happy to do that. So, so for us, it does fall under education in that realm, but it still is impacting those folks and hitting on those other areas. And we still feel incredibly important, yes.
Your, your flex, your flexibility is really your strength. And you are not subject to many of the constraints that public agencies are subject to. And I, I, I would suggest, of course, you should keep on doing what you do best. And we should keep on doing what we think we can do. And what I ask, is there any way that we can help you in doing what you do? Or are you just informing us about another community resource that is not always in the forefront?
Well, thank you, Henry. I appreciate that. And, and yes, I think the flexibility is part of the key with the, with the chest that we can, we can do that. I would say, right now, one, it was to inform, that's certainly the step here that we wanted to be able to share this as you are meeting and as we enter the fall and, and have so many things going on. But also that as maybe issues come up, we may not see the, the select board is being on, perhaps there's a conversation that would kind of happen with me and our, our board around opportunities for collaboration. And I don't know if it's a funding opportunity or something else, but you know, I'd love to be able to have that door open, knowing that this is something that's important to us and clearly lines a lot with the goals that the select board have. So as those opportunities may arise, please know that we are here. And, and the same would go for us to in turn as we really think about areas we want to focus on and target this year that I may be reaching out to all of you to say, we had this idea or this came to us from someone, what do you think? And can we, can we collaborate on that?
That would be great.
Yeah. So open door, open email. Let's put it that way, I guess.
Okay.
Let me also maybe mention to the other members of the board, from time to time, people will come to us and have some kind of a problem with which they need help, help and support, sometimes financially, sometimes access to resources and so on, that we really can't help them with. But we might want to think about referring them to Jennifer. And she could probably be a lot more creative in trying to help individual people on an individual basis. And there are other organizations of similar, you know, in a similar situation, you know, things like the Open Table and St. Vincent de Paul and other charitable organizations that are pretty, will help people, no questions asked.
Right. Okay. Linda and then Stephen.
Yeah, I, I just want to thank Jennifer and the chest for all the work they've done in this needs assessment. I think it's timely. And I know that the chest has been instrumental in supporting a number of initiatives for the town, whether it be through COA or the schools or whatever. So again, thank you for all that good work.
Thank you, Linda. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I actually, I was going to make a comment and ask a question. The comment was you, Jennifer, briefly in your introduction, you talked about the Concord Together, you know, assistance for businesses that the community just stepped in, stepped in really without hesitation and took on as a fiduciary agent. Because there really wasn't a role or there wasn't anything set up. And the town, as, as Henry noted, doesn't have necessarily the flexibility to provide that kind of timely, no questions asked funding that I think was needed during, during the pandemic. And so thank you so much for doing that for the business community. The question is, you know, your, your needs assessment was, you know, going on during the pandemic. Do you have a sense or in your fuller report, is there any discussion about the impact of the pandemic on needs that certainly, you know, existed before and are going to exist post?
Right. Yes, thanks, Stephen, for that. And we certainly are happy to step up when needed. It's a great question and actually something we discussed because we were supposed to start the needs assessment in the fall of twenty, well, just around the fall or late winter of twenty nineteen. And that's why things were delayed, what, because of the pandemic. But we, we talked with the consultants and said, okay, should we go through this and is this going to be impacted? Are people's answers and their needs going to be different because of where we stand? And, and we went through it and I think, yes, certain areas may have been heightened. Certainly, mental health has been heightened. The areas needing more services around food insecurity are heightened, but they existed before and they knew they existed before and even data, you know, wasn't collected certainly in twenty twenty, those go back five and 10 years or five years, probably more of them. That was pre-pandemic and we know that many of these issues existed then and will continue to exist. Maybe they will level out, maybe they will decrease, but they're not going away. And, and, and we certainly, certainly to address them now. And, and as I know, as said, is mental health system was broken before, it is really blown to bits now at this point. There, there's no way that that could be glued back together. And we need to try to do something to assist for our community in some way. And I mean, I certainly think that's an area what I would like us to try and collaborate on. I don't have an answer for what it looks like right now, but I think that, you know, a lot of people are hurting from it and we need to think what we can do.
Right. Definitely. Are there any final questions? Susan?
Oh, yeah, I just have a comment, not a question, and it's just a big thank you for all that you do. And I know having, following up on what Stephen said about your collaboration with Concord Together, I, I mean, that was so visible, the, the impact of that was very, was great and appreciated by the businesses. And so thanks for everything.
Oh, thank you, Susan. I appreciate that. And I, I do want to also add, and I know that we've had collaborations over the years, as Linda mentioned, funding with the COA and the Community Service Coordinator, you know, one thing that certainly has come through in this research is how pivotal those roles are in our community. Particularly the Community Services Coordinator position, because there are organizations that don't have the infrastructure or the staffing to have someone in that kind of role and they really rely on have that and to be resource and referral for, for many individuals. And so, you know, we clearly were happy to be supporting that for so many years and, and know that that role is, is essential. And maybe there's other avenues that that can be, who knows, supported.
Absolutely. So on behalf of the select board and, and the entire community, thank you, Jennifer, and, and to your board, your staff, all the people on the allocations committee, everybody. It's a great organization. We're lucky to have you. Thanks for coming, coming and joining us tonight.
Thank you so much for taking the time. I really appreciate all of you and all your questions. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And we're moving on. I see Carrie LaFleur is here to talk about the loan application with the Mass Clean Water Trust.
Thank you and good evening. This evening, I'm here in front of you on behalf of the Board of Health, seeking approval to submit a loan application to the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust to borrow the remaining balance of five hundred twelve thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars from an article that was approved at the two thousand and nine annual town meeting. The funds will be used to offer low-interest loans to residents to replace septic systems. And then the loan is secured through a betterment that is recorded against the property. Again, in two thousand and nine town meeting approved a debt authorization of two million dollars to borrow funds through the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust, Community Septic Management Loan Program. That agency is now known as the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust. And these were zero-interest loans to the town. And then through the Board of Health, they would be loaned out based on applications to residents at a, at a low interest cost of, of two percent. To date, we've had two programs. The first program was in two thousand and four. That was a million dollars that benefited fifty-eight homeowners. This program to date, again, two million dollars has benefited ninety-six homeowners. So a hundred and fifty-four homeowners in total have benefited through low-interest loans secured by the Town of Concord. In two thousand and fourteen, the zero interest to the community program was replaced with the two-interest percent loan. But we have been grandfathered since two thousand and fourteen. So we, on pretty much each year, we're submitting, requesting an interim loan from the agency. And from two thousand and fourteen up until this year, they've, they've grandfathered that to us and allowed us to borrow under the zero percent. But they've said our, our good luck has come to an end and now we need to borrow under the two percent program. But we still will turn around and loan that out to residents at two percent. So there's no cost to the town other than the, the minor administrative costs to put the program together. So again, this evening, I'm requesting that you authorize the So again, this evening, I'm requesting that you authorize the town manager to file the Community Septic Management Program Loan Application, seeking $512,337, uh, which is the remaining amount authorized under Article 42 of the 2009 Annual Town Meeting.
Questions for our Chief Financial Officer, Linda?
Carrie, you know, thank you for bringing this forward to us. Um, and you may, may not be able to answer this directly, but I guess the question, one thought or question that I had was, is this likely to be available to benefit the White Pond, any of the White Pond area residents? Who may need to upgrade their septic systems?
So any, any resident in town is eligible to file an application with the Board of Health. And the Board of Health will review to determine whether or not the application meets the requirements of the program.
Okay, thank you. All right. Um, Henry and then Matt.
Can I just, can I just follow up on that? I wonder, because I think what, I was thinking the same thing as Linda about seeing whether or not this, uh, this grant program could be used to upgrade the septic systems and give priority to people uh, who surround White Pond. Um, and that we would maybe somewhat be more, somewhat more proactive in seeking applications from people who lived in areas such as that where septic systems might actually be adequate or passing, but still might be able to be improved so that the amount of eutrophication in that pond could be, uh, reduced through, uh, the availability of these funds. So that's one thing. And my second point.
Let me just say before you go on that I had also been thinking along those lines. And we will be meeting with the White Pond Advisory Committee in a few weeks. I think it's the first meeting in November. Um, at their last meeting, however, they seemed as if they're leaning more toward a sewage treatment plant rather than improving septic because the septic, uh, the leach fields were part of the problem. Anyway, I think we're going to hear a lot more about that at our meeting in November. So let's.
But so anyway, I'm glad that we're all thinking on the long lines. The other thing I just had mentioned about the, just the mechanics of this arrangement has been discussed as authorizing the submission of the application. But if you look at the authority to file document, it's we, if we vote in favor of this, we are not only authorizing the application, but we're also authorizing, I guess, without further uh, approval of the board, uh, the town manager to execute agreements for the grant and or loan assistance as well as furnish such information, data, et cetera, et cetera. So if we vote in favor of this, we are, as I said, we are not just voting for filing the application. We are also authorizing the, um, the, um, the entering into agreements on behalf of the town, which is something we might want to have the opportunity to look at again in the future, if we get the, if the grants are offered. And we, we want to know, have some input on what the specific terms of the, uh, of the transactions are.
I have a totally different question, which is when loan recipients make principal and interest payments, where does the money go?
The, so the, the money comes into the town's government fund. And the government fund is used as a source of funding to repay the loan, the loan payments.
Without appropriation?
No, it, it's, it's appropriated as part of the budget article, the town's budget article annually.
But so I guess what I'm trying to understand is, are we over time getting a kitty of money that is going to be used on a perpetual basis to loan out to cover these, uh, septic renewals? In other words, at this point, it would seem like we would have, uh, all three programs worth of money eventually coming back that could be redeployed, right? I mean, that i- in fact, with 2% interest, so it'll be in- incremented a little bit. Um, so is that what we're working with? Because the way it sounds when you read this is, well, we had a million dollar program, but now we're only going to have a $500,000 program and, you know, we're, we're not going to get as many uh, houses that are able to be helped. But in fact, meanwhile, all those loan recipients are making payments. So there's money coming in that can be redeployed presumably.
Yeah, so that, that's actually an interesting question and I can tell you about my experience in a different community. And, um, so in, in a community I worked in prior, we got to the end of our loan program and we had money remaining and we asked the state what we could do with that. And the state authorized the Board of Health to set up its own, um, continuing loan program with those proceeds. So that, that's an option, but that was not an option until we had gotten through the, the total program. So we, we would need to draw down these remaining funds. And then we could perhaps go to the state to seek authority for a different locally based loan program.
Okay, interesting.
Which would be funded by town funds. Is that correct, Carrie? I mean, there's a program as we borrow money and then the payments that the, um, the homeowners make are used to pay back the loan. Is that, am I getting that right?
So we, we authorize the, the debt. And that is provided to us through this grant program, zero interest basis. It's loaned out and then homeowners repay or make payments on their loans. And we use that to, to pay the debt service. So there, there is money, there is money now in excess of what we pay out each year in debt service. And at the end of the program, there will be money remaining that we should be able to apply to the state to create our own program. Because the state will not be looking for that money back.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there further questions on this?
Yeah, I would just make the comment that I don't feel any need to do any further review of the agreements. This is an established program. I think it's been administered for some time. I, I don't feel like, you know, I, I'm fine with moving as, uh, expected um, to grant the town manager the authority to do this. I just responding to Henry's remark.
Right, right. We don't need to get into the weeds. I think the Board of Health reviews these applications carefully and that's not our, our job. All right. I think we are ready for a motion.
To move to grant the town manager to the authority to file a Community Septic Management Program Loan Application, seeking $512,337 in funds authorized under 42 ATM 2009 by adopting the resolution included in the October 4th, 2021 Select Board Meeting Materials.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Bates.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Escobado.
Aye.
And myself, Mr. Johnston, aye.
Okay, thank you. Carrie, and thank you to the Board of Health. Okay, we are up to the, um, Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. Uh, Linda, if you want to talk about that, I see also we have Keith Bergman here.
Yes, I'll just say that the Affordable Housing Trust, um, has met now twice. Um, and has been about the business of, um, setting up the organization for how the trust will work, um, moving forward. And there's, so there are some initial tasks that have occurred. And Keith Bergman is now the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust and is here, um, to introduce that.
Okay, Keith.
Thanks, uh, thanks very much. Keith Bergman, 56, White Avenue. Um, appreciated the, your previous discussion about septic systems in my neighborhood. I am the Chair of the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. And I was also, uh, pleased to be able to serve as Chair of the immediate predecessor, the Affordable Housing Trust Study Committee a couple of years ago. We are, uh, moving ahead with, um, having a, uh, trust, uh, document brought before us at our next meeting. Uh, we are, um, also undertaking, uh, a, I, I think a unique, uh, measure that was included in our, uh, bylaw, which is not included in all of the Affordable Housing Trust bylaws. And that is that, uh, uh, the, the bylaw that town meeting approves specifically uh, commands that, um, we develop and that subject to, to the select board approval guidelines, uh, that, uh, are consistent with adopted, uh, housing, uh, plans of the town. So that we're not, you know, at some rogue agency, but we're, uh, working in concert with the, uh, plans uh, that, that the town has approved and with policy that this board approves. So, um, and, and in that context, we, we discussed, uh, the, 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 the select board's practice to have a, um, a charge, uh, adopted for e- each, uh, each committee. And we, we, we would, uh, be of the opinion that, uh, the bylaw that was adopted by town meeting last September uh, seems to set forth what our, our charge would be. And that what we're, what we're, uh, asking, uh, tonight, we had a vote at our meeting last week. Actually, I should mention, we have a quorum of our committee that's here. We're not posted, but we are attending your posted meeting and we're not, we're not going to deliberate while we're here. But Linda, at least on my, and we're even sitting together on my screen, uh, Linda and Stephen and myself are three members of the, uh, Affordable Housing Trust Board. Mike Lawson is the, is the fourth member. And so what we're presenting, uh, tonight, in addition to providing a copy of the bylaws passed by the voters at town meeting, is what, for lack of a better word, we're calling a, a recommended vision statement. Something that could be placed at a, a town webpage, uh, for, uh, for the, for our board that would describe what our, what our function is and importantly, describe the context of how we got here. I think there, over the last several years, there have been two committees. First, the Affordable Housing Funding Committee and then the Affordable Housing, uh, Trust Study Committee that brought us to, to where we are, uh, and the actions of town meeting that, uh, led to, uh, led to this board's creation. One of the specific things that we're recommending is that since the bylaw provides that the membership of this Affordable Housing, uh, Trust Board shall be, uh, between five and seven members, that we would ask that you establish the number so that we can be certain whether or not we have a quorum. And that our recommendation, uh, since thus far, there have been four members appointed, that you establish the minimum, uh, number five, uh, as provided in the bylaw as the, 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 as the, the current makeup of, of the board. It would be great to get a fifth member appointed in time. It would be great to get a sixth or seventh member, uh, appointed, but right now we have four. And we would ask that, that you establish the, um, the makeup of the committee at the, um, minimum number uh, that the, that the bylaw provides, which is, which is five, so that we'll have a quorum at least with three. From, I, I found the earlier discussion tonight about affordable housing instructive. In part because what, uh, one of the things that the Affordable Housing Trust has, uh, thought about doing is, as we, as we embark on this, um, task to, um, develop proposed, uh, policy and goal statements that are consistent with adopted housing goals and subject to the select board approval to serve as guidelines for the trust. As we do that, we don't want to, we do not want to do it in a vacuum. We want to reach out to the, to the, uh, many other housing boards and, uh, stakeholders and Concord. So that, uh, everyone can know and that we can, uh, work on, uh, where do we fit in? Where does this new entity fit into the pantheon of affordable housing boards? What is it that we can uniquely do, say, that others can't? And one of the things that we can do, uh, if there's money in the, in the, in the trust fund is act more quickly. Uh, be, uh, than other boards might do. Those that have, for example, Community Preservation Committee even now is, is, uh, entertaining, uh, applications uh, for, uh, funding actions that would not be consummated until, uh, next, uh, spring's town meeting. One of the things that the Affordable Housing F- Funding Committee has found is that if you set up an Affordable Housing Trust, then you have, uh, an entity that can act quickly when affordable housing opportunities arise. And so it, it's worth having a discussion amongst the other housing stakeholders and, and, and with, with your, uh, with your board about where do, where do we fit in? What is it that we might be uniquely qualified to do? And what is the strategy, uh, to accomplish, uh, that? So, uh, I'd look, look forward to, uh, to, uh, moving ahead. Uh, I'm, I was pleased, uh, to, uh, see that there is, uh, a quarterly meeting of, uh, Concord's Housing Roundtable, which is being scheduled. Uh, heard from Liz Rust earlier today. I think the date has been set for November 8th. Uh, so that the various, uh, housing entities which get together anyway on a quarterly basis could get together and talk about, uh, just update each other on where, uh, where they are in housing matters. So, uh, we'll want to be in communication with those other committees. Uh, our next, uh, Housing Trust Meeting is on October, uh, 21st. And we look forward to, uh, to moving ahead.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Keith. Um, thank you to everybody who is serving on this important new committee. And, um, it's great to see the committee getting off to a good start. What are you looking for from the select board tonight? Are you looking for us to, I think, determine a set number such as five per membership? And also to, do you need us to approve your vision statement?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, that, that we're, we're taking the position that this, uh, vision statement would be a policy goal or a statement, uh, within the, uh, the meaning of the bylaw, which would, uh, be subject to the select board approval. So we would like that statement, uh, to be approved and to be our, our way of communicating with the public. What are we all about and, and how are we going to do it? So I would, would appreciate approval of that statement. And, uh, and, uh, part of that statement, uh, indicates that it consists of five members. Five is written in italics in the draft, but that's certainly part of what we would ask you to do.
Okay. Are there questions or comments? Matt?
I'm confused by the title of the document being a vision statement. I mean, it seems like it's, you, you know, your, your bylaws, your, I don't know. It's something, but not a vision statement, I guess. I don't know, it's something, but not a vision statement, I guess. You know, I would not think of a vision statement as anything that I would vote on as a board. And so I guess it's just a very basic thing. And then the other, while I've got the floor, I would just say that I totally agree about the Affordable Housing Trust operating in the context of the overall town's plans for affordable housing. And I think right now, we are suffering a bit from the lack of an updated housing production plan. And that, you know, this effort that I hope is just now getting off the ground, but that can be completed in relatively rapid fashion will give us a updated housing production plan that we could then use as a roadmap for evaluating decisions such as the one that was before us tonight. So.
Madam Chair, could I, if I could respond, I'm happy, I think we're happy. I'm not asking the other members here for their for their policy vote, since we're not here to vote. But I, for one, would be happy with the word vision not appearing there. All that need appear there is is start off with Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust at the top of our of our webpage. And and that this is the fact that it's a statement of some and in and you could infer a policy statement. We felt meant that it needs select board approval under Section eight dash eighteen of the bylaw.
So I would agree that setting the definitive number of members would be something that we ought to vote on. I don't know, you know, about the other aspects there, but already have the one article that lays out the other terms of the
Right. I think that they might be looking for us to approve this statement in lieu of writing a charge, since we already have the bylaw. And and just agreeing that we don't that we don't need to write another charge. Do I have that correct?
Yes. And Keith is right, if you look at the bylaw, that section eight is referenced, which has a section eight, and it specifically says, you know, recommend goals or policy statements for the select board to approve.
Okay. Linda, you've got a question or comment?
The town manager just made the comment I was going to make.
Okay. Thank you. Susan, did you have a comment? And then Keith? No? Okay, Keith?
I just wanted to assure you, we will be back with bona fide policies at a later date with that we're taking seriously the charge that we are to. You know, we will need to have guidelines and you will need to approve those. So we're going to spend a good deal of time developing those and as, you know, collegial process with the housing, the other housing entities as we can, so that we're, so that we can see where we fit in. Thanks.
Terry, would you, would you, would you be willing at this point to entertain a motion that we fix the number of members of the of the trust at five? So that we could, if you would, we somewhat could make that motion and we could accomplish that. And then I would ask Mr. Bergman, if there are people that you would like to try to recruit to fill the remaining position? And they have not already filled out volunteer cards, that I would encourage you to do that. So we could have some viable candidates that were compatible with your with your group and your objectives that we could nominate and appoint. Just one, just other, an incidental note, with regard to the utility of CPA funds for housing. The problem with CPA funds is they are only available by means of reimbursement. So if you're going to do anything with the CPA, you've got to have the money to lay out upfront before that money ever becomes available to you.
Okay, I think we should proceed with the motion.
Yes, and I have a motion. Yeah, with a couple of small changes from the draft that so I've moved to approve the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Statement is included in the October fourth, twenty-twenty-one Select Board Meeting Materials and set the number of members of the trust at five pursuant to the Concord Municipal Affordable House Trust Bylaw, Section six, item eighteen.
Second.
There a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Bates.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobater. And myself, Mr. Johnson, aye.
Okay.
Very much.
Very much.
Thank you.
And we will look forward to having some discussions about all of the important work that's coming up. Thank you. We now move on to, we're supposed to be at seven fifty P M. We're running late tonight, item eleven. What this item is about is that the Finance Committee is doing their annual guidelines. And this year, they are asking for the top three to five strategic issues, challenges, or opportunities facing the town. And they are also, in the other document and around page sixty or so of your packet, saying that guideline setting involves consideration of, for one, what do Concord citizens value? And what benefits do they receive? There's also a number two and three that are more in the town manager's prerogative, such as crafting the detail of the budgets and looking at the prop two and a half levy limit. But as far as what do Concord citizens view? And what are the top three to five strategic issues facing us? We need to have a little discussion amongst us to give input to the town manager, who will be submitting this before October fourteenth to the Finance Committee. So Susan? Susan?
It just seems to me that as it is with the schools, when you look at the budget for the town and operations for the school operate, many expense is personnel. And I know Stephen's thinking about this, but I would expect that that would be the biggest driver in the expenditure of funds. And just wanted to mention that last year, it was much lower than it has been in the past and totally understand that pandemic totally related. And and we have to keep in mind that there are other places where people actually lost their jobs. So you have to keep it in perspective, but it wasn't, I know that the town staff did a lot of work during that time. So I just wanted to point out that I think that that is probably a main driver and that the other initiatives will fit around that somehow.
Okay, thank you. Who else has priority or opportunity or input? Matt?
Yeah, I just think, following up on our discussion of the last meeting about the capital plan, that I believe that, especially after having a relatively flat year last night, last year for the tax impact on citizens, there is an opportunity to, as we seem to have weathered the pandemic well as a town, to make a pretty robust use of stabilization funds to, you know, bring forward some of the tax impact that the middle school is likely to bring. And so I've just all about, how do we smooth this out? And maybe work from a capital perspective. The other thing is, following up on the earlier discussion that we had with the community chess. I mean, it is clear that there are social services impacts from the pandemic, but that aren't going away. And especially with inflation and other factors, the cost of housing continuing to put pressure on certain segments of our public, that I would like to see that the social services aspects of the town budget, you know, get extra attention. So those are two priorities, at least that that I see as strategic priorities.
Okay, thank you.
And again, this is my first time through this process, so I don't know if I had just said was out of order, but
No, it's exactly what I think the kind of thing that we're looking for. Linda?
So this is following up on an earlier comment that maybe Susan was after. But I think it's really important that we continue to focus on recruitment, employee development, and competitive salaries. And I know that that's on everyone's horizon, but I just wanted to say that. And then the other comment has to do with, as we list select board goals and priorities, as well as listen to feedback coming from all kinds of sectors. I think we have to continue to put some emphasis on meeting equity and sustainability for some of our segments of our population. And so I'm just picking up on comments and others have also surfaced.
So you said equity and sustainability, those sound like two
Sustainability in the sense of certain groups of our citizens being able to continue to remain and thrive in the town.
Right, okay, okay, so fiscal sustainability in households, you're not talking about necessarily
But I'm also talking about equity of town allocated resources to assist in that in that way. And I think Matt more specifically zeroed in on segments of the of dollars being attributed to social services. And so in part, that would be part of what I'm talking about.
Okay.
So balance and equity in terms of how we're assigning our budget dollars.
Right, sorry, my connection was unstable there. Hopefully, even, did you get that all right? Okay, good. And Henry, do you have some suggestions?
Well, I think the elephant in the room is the middle school financing. And that's a very large number. And unless we manage it very carefully, it's going to have a very heavy tax impact that will fall in many cases on the people who are least able to pay it. And the people that we, I think that Linda was referring to as the the people who are of lower income and who have less valuable, less or lower cost homes, where adding a hundred or fifteen, fifteen hundred, a hundred or a hundred fifty dollars a month onto their tax and mortgage bill is going to place a very heavy burden on them. And to given incentive to people who have owned homes in this town for a long time. The people that I refer to as our human capital to realize the high value of their home, sell and move out, and then have those homes be torn down and be replaced by six thousand square foot houses. And which is not what our housing goals are in this town. So I think that we really need to focus very, very intensely on how we are going to redistribute, if you will, the tax burden among the, among the homeowners in this town, so that those who are least able to pay do not, do not have to carry the burden of the increased costs that comes from the bonding of the middle school, for which we still, I guess, we will not even know what the cost is going to be until next month, when we've been told we will have that number. But that's got to be, financially, that's got to be the big, the big issue that we're facing.
Okay. Thank you, Susan.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond, I think Henry's referring to the residential exemption conversation that we reviewed about a year ago. And I just wanted to point out that if you're favoring ownership over rentership, that certainly makes sense. But there are, I think about nine hundred rental units, and those are exempt from that from the exemption. So the expectation is that anyone who's in a two-family, three-family, or bigger complex of rentals, the, if it's owner occupied, the owner will get credit exemption for their portion. But if they're renting to others, the expectation is that would, that their taxes will certainly go up because they're not included in the exemption population. And that that tax hike would pass on to renters who, I believe, in many cases, and this is maybe totally unjustified judgment on my part, are people who are renting, but would in many cases prefer to own and are not able to do that. So it's that shifting of that burden that concerns me. Where is it being shifted? The places that have it have currently have a bigger commercial segment. Right now, our commercial and our residential rate is the same. But again, in places where there's a bigger, bigger commercial segment, some of that redistribution would go to the commercial segment. And that wouldn't necessarily happen here, so it's more complex.
I want to say, Terry, is I don't want to get bogged down in the details of this, but these are all things that if we want to, we can work these out and explore what the options are. But I see no other way to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish unless we go in that direction. And we'll, we'll deal with the details.
Okay, we definitely need to keep talking about this, but it's really a separate discussion. It's a very important discussion, but it's not really on tonight's agenda. So
I just want to point out, I agree, but it keeps coming up. So I wanted to just fill in a little bit more of the picture. Thank you.
Yes. And it will keep coming.
So, all right, well, I'll tell you what, then, I was about to put it on the agenda for November, when we're doing the tax classification. Or do you want to talk about it before then?
There's actually no rush, there's no rush. Talk about it, because this will not, this, the tax hit will not come until we issue the bonds.
Okay, okay. I'm going to add it to the discussion when we do the tax classification, which we just set the date for that, November, I believe, is twenty-second. And we will talk about it that night. So I just want to add, for this discussion, I thought of two priorities. One is transportation, which we heard a lot about tonight. And I've also heard that when when people arrive in affordable housing, their first phone call to the community outreach worker is now that they need transportation. So in order to really be a welcoming community in order to really be a welcoming community, complete DEI community, I think transportation is really important issue. And I think we're getting very far behind in it and compared to our surrounding towns. So I'd like to see that that be a priority. And we heard that also from the needs assessment tonight. And the second priority that I have is we will be taking in a lot of revenue from our and from Build Back Better, Infrastructure and all of these other programs that I heard more about at the MMA Fiscal Policy Meeting as well. And so I think the priority should be that we figure out what we're doing with all this revenue, which is a wonderful problem to have within the limits of the law. But we have a lot of infrastructure needs, so we need to figure out how to set some priorities. So those are my two ideas. And Stephen?
Yeah, I just want to, yeah, I want to thank the board for the feedback. I think this is, you know, none of these things are a surprise. I think these are things that have been articulated during various discussions about goals and certainly other community conversations. So I think in terms of sort of broader community, you know, ideas for the overall budget, I think they're consistent with what we're looking at. I just want to note that that some, you know, like revenues from like the federal government, you know, don't necessarily get blended into the operating budget because you don't want to use revenues for you know, one time revenue for recurring expense as a kind of budgeting one on one thing. But I do think we are looking at ways to find one time expenses that would normally be deferred as a part of our either operating budget or capital plan, excuse me. So, yeah, I would agree with that. And then I, and I think the middle school discussion is is an important one and it really is a a pocketbook type discussion. But just to clarify that that is separate from the operating budget, that the that the debt exclude, that the additional tax burden would be by virtue of debt exclusion, not something imposed on, you know, through the operating budget, although we clearly understand the need to be as efficient as we possibly can in the operating budget, so the people's tax bill that they open up is as tight as it can be. I mean, as as efficient and as as providing the best value that we possibly can and minimize the impact of the additional expense.
Okay, very good, so.
Just realized I forgot one item, which was that, given that it doesn't look like our local option petition is getting through the legislature, I do expect that we will go yet again in allocating some affordable housing funding in this year. And last year, it was a point of some controversy with the Finance Committee. So I would really like to get in front of that and hope that, again, we've got this long term commitment. We have a mechanism that we have been using. We have a preferred mechanism that we would like to have in the future, but it's still not in place. And so we still need to raise funds.
Right. Okay, so I hope Stephen that that helps you at a high level without us getting into the weeds. That you have some ideas of our priorities and can write to the Finance Committee with the guidelines. Okay, now we next have some short items, which is good because they're running over time. This next item is very quick. I was really not aware of this until I became chair, but the way the warrants are approved, a previous select board years ago, under the law, delegated the authority to the chair. So I received the warrant about two days before the bills are paid and I have to go throw it in, approve it. And so when each of you is chair, you'll be doing that. And then the full board at our next regular meeting. So I am planning to be away one week in October, at the end of October. And what we'd like to do is amend our the previous vote that another select board took, so that the clerk can in the absence of the chair, the clerk can approve the warrant until it goes to the full board. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I just had one, which is, you know, an absence of a week. Does that, is that makes a material difference in in terms of the town's ability to make its bills?
Yes, yes, what happens is, because I've been right up to the wire a few times. I get the warrant on Monday night, like about five minutes before the select board is going to meet. And then I don't usually start working on it Monday night and then and if I get busy Tuesday and Wednesday, by Wednesday night, they're in a panic. Thursday morning, I have to pay bills, the checks have to be done. So it's a very tight timeframe. And there's always a possibility that chair could, you know, be in an accident or be in the hospital or whatever. So it's good to have a backup person anyway. So do we have a motion?
Move to amend the original vote taken on October seventh, twenty nineteen, under Agenda Item Eight, to allow the Chair of the Select Board, in his or her absence, the clerk of the board, or in his or her absence, the clerk of the board, to approve all bills, drafts, orders and payrolls, not otherwise presented for approval at a posted meeting to the full board, provided, however, that if such bills, drafts, orders and payrolls are approved by the board chair or in his or her absence, the clerk of the board, he and she or she shall make available to the board at the first meeting following such action, a record of such actions and further, to ask the board clerk to include such on the notice for the next meeting of the board.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Ms. Akron.
I.
Ms. Bates.
I.
Mr. Dane.
I.
Ms. Escovedo.
I.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, I.
Okay, thank you.
I guess by better judgment.
Another probably quick item, I think. We, each member of the board has been submitting suggestions to the liaison for the DEI Commission, which is Matt, and the Concord Twenty Twenty Five Executive Committee, which is Henry. We finished talking about this last week, so I put it back on the agenda, but frankly, I'm not sure exactly where we're at with it. Henry?
I could give a quick progress report. So for the DI Commission, I have so far interviewed five individuals. I have two more interviews scheduled for tomorrow. And we don't yet have a full roster of candidates that have applied. So we've, I've been also reaching out through contacts, but also a notice went out on Facebook today to try to encourage others on the the trades group, actually. And so and we'll, I'll be curious to see if this works because i- if it if it is successful, we might be able to use it as a recruiting method more generally. And of course, it have worked with the League Women Voters as well to try to get their membership to encourage further candidates. And so, you know, we're on the way, but not yet done of identifying a roster of candidates that meet the objectives stated in the charge. But I I think we'll get there.
Okay, now I have a question, which is the league puts out a newsletter every Monday and they're still recruiting. I think at some point you want to want to let them know when we're, I mean, we need maybe a deadline or we need to let them know when we have enough.
Like I said, I think ideally we would be staffing this committee by next Thursday. I mean, I would like to be able to put in nominations for our meeting on the eighteenth. So we'll see, you know, and I'll be in a position to, you know, judge whether we're going to get there with a week from today.
Great.
Oh, and thanks, everybody, for your suggestions.
Linda?
Matt, this may already be on your radar. Have you reached out to the Concord Housing Authority? They could post something for you.
Okay, I have not gone in that direction. But, yeah, thanks for the notice, this idea.
Could you remind me of what the number is that you're ultimately looking forward, members?
Nine.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, great. And Henry, do you want to report about the Twenty Twenty Five Committee?
Yes, I I sent Terry a spreadsheet that I put together about a week ago that has about forty prospective members for the for the Twenty Twenty Five Committee and have received green cards for about fifteen of them. There are a few more people that I would like to see put in, put in cards for consideration on this. And so I'm still working on that before we start making choices. But we are, the issue here is I don't consider that any number is too many, partly because that gives you more choice, but also there will be numerous subcommittees that many people who might actually be better suited to serve on than on the executive committee. So I'm going to work over the next week on contacting some people and then I'll get back to you. But if you have, particularly if you have people that whose arm you might be able to twist, who, because typically the people that you really want are not always the ones who will volunteer. If there are people that you think should be on the committee and you think you can twist their arm, please do so.
Right, okay, great. Thank you. Okay, great, we are now moving on to committee nations.
Sure, so committee nominations for this week are Pam Rockwell of one eight, of eighteen ten Main Street, Lynn Rapoli of thirty four Everett Street and Fred Seward of one fifty eight Spencer Brook Road to the two 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 nine Main Street Advisory Committee for terms to expire on April thirtieth, twenty twenty four.
Okay, thank you. And we are running pretty late. I'm going to ask everybody to do just a very brief liaison report.
I'd suggest we just skip it this week and do it next week.
Okay, Susan's nodding.
Excuse me, yeah.
Yeah, does anybody have anything that cannot wait?
I just wanted to give ten seconds. White Pond Advisory Committee met and approved approved their vision statement, which they forwarded to us and will be hearing about beginning in November.
That's correct, well.
I might add, I might, I might add to the report on the Board of Appeals that Matt did not give. And that is that the appeal of the denial of the earth removal permit to the the Main Street project has been filed by the applicant. And I think we need to, we need to put on our agenda at a very early time a discussion about establishing a strategy and a budget for pursuing that, because I do not want to see us spend another eighty to hundred thousand dollars on litigation on that matter.
Okay, I'm going to make a note of that, we will talk about that. All right. Okay, we are moving on to public comments.
Terry?
Dory Kehoe.
Good, thank you. Good evening, Dory Kehoe, fifty one MacArthur Road. I'm here this evening with Phil Posner of two twenty three Law's Brook Road. Neither of us is representing any particular Concord group, but we both, Phil is an avid cyclist and one of the two non-town employee members of the Transportation Advisory Committee. And me as a gardener who was part of the Green Thumbs that worked with Concord Public Works in renovating and redesigning Junction Park are very concerned. We're here because we are afraid and we are completely puzzled that the safety issue at Junction Park is not getting the attention that it demands. And time, as we can watch it by the progress of the Route Two bicycle bridge, is moving ahead at a rapid pace. We were encouraged when the TAC in May agreed to try new walk your wheel signs throughout Junction Park. Nearly five months later, and there are no new signs. So there's not even a chance to see if they would work. We all remember from our junior high and high school years that one of the principal purposes of government is to protect the citizens, its citizens, from danger from both within and without. And Junction Park is just such a place. It's used by people of diverse ages and mobility levels and add the known increase of cyclists from towns way outside of Concord. And all, including cyclists, are put in danger. So we're asking you, when will you, our town government, accept the responsibility of ensuring safety for users of this lovely park, now described as part of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail? This evening, I know you're tight on time, is not a time for discussion of the details of this issue, but it is, we really devoutly hope, the time for the select board and town manager to acknowledge that study and action and evaluation is needed. Also needed is an is a is an acknowledgement that this is likely beyond the ability of our own town governments and town personnel. It's likely that we're going to need outside help to be looking at this problem, but we need to begin. And we also need to acknowledge that this is very likely to require outside help. And outside help means funding is going to be needed. So we need to begin and we need to have the town government starting to think about this. Surely, we're not waiting for a bad accident to say, oh, we really should get started on this problem. So thank you very much. And we've decided, we're very brief, I hope I was brief, Bill won't bother to say anything, just to say that we're here because we really want you to begin attacking this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Dory, thank you, Bill.
Hi, Pamela, thirteen Concord Green, Unit Four. I'm worried when the town looks only at the cost of something as the controlling thing and not what you're going to get for that cost. Sometimes the cost is what it is and we have to pay it. Because not to have the thing would be much more costly in terms of our quality of life and the town's survivability. The town goals of sustainability and fighting climate change locally, electrify everything and decarbonize the energy supply have been reaffirmed by town meeting many times. It often looks expensive. For example, when we look at only the costs of new construction, it's tempting to say, no, we can't. That middle school's too expensive, that affordable housing is too expensive. But we got to also look at the cost of not doing it because we have to have a middle school. For example, we have to invest in decarbonizing building construction, period. The cost is what it is and it's fairly small now, even while it's a new technique that builders are slow and often resistant to adopting. But the cost of not doing it threatens our survival. Every new building that is built with natural gas or fossil fuel infrastructure is thirty years and hundreds of tons of carbon added to the atmosphere all the way down the whole industrial development of it. Whereas electrified buildings pay off financially. We mustn't spend more money on fossil fuel infrastructure, including school buses, transportation and and public buildings. including school buses, transportation and, and public buildings, where we can't legally mandate this. We've got to find a way to incentivize people to do this. For example, there are individuals and organizations of builders and designers who are concerned with decarbonization and improving buildings, homes and schools at lower-cost investments. But one such expert is local Dover resident David Green, who is an entrepreneur by trade. After being CEO and taking public several companies, he retired. He has a physics degree with, from Oxford University and a Harvard MBA with honors. And he has been giving seminars sponsored by civic groups. I attended several of them in Concord, Lexington, Wellesley, Needham, et cetera, on how to make money by turning your home net zero in a financially sustainable, with a fifteen percent return on investment for existing buildings. He's also recently developed plans for new buildings. And I think all of the people in Concord would benefit by looking at him. The physicist in him understands things like low-e coatings and triple-glazed windows. And the MBA in him knows how to analyze financial investments. And he combined both to ensure that he only recommends things that make both energy sense and financial sense. And if you're wondering how he does this and he doesn't work for or get paid by any manufacturer or installer of equipment, he's retired after twenty-year career in biotech. And and he does that to help people cut their carbon emissions, combat climate change and preserve the planet for our children. I think we should get David Green involved with the Affordable Housing Unit, the Affordable Housing Commission. I think it would benefit for Stephen, you and everybody on this committee and most of the committee, the town committees, to get familiar with that.
Okay, thank you, Pamela. Thank you. Is there any other public comment tonight?
One more thing. A local school, yes, very quick. A local school in just three years, a solar installation at the high school in Batesville, Arkansas, helped turn the district's two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar budget deficit into a one-point-eight-million-dollar surplus. You can possibly make solar installations at the new high school, not only pay for themselves, but fund other things as well, simply by looking at things like canopies over the parking areas.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much, Pamela. Okay, is there any other public comment tonight? Okay, we are going to have a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Move to adjourn to executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding Estorbrook Road as the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town.
Okay, I do declare it would have detrimental effect. We're ready for a roll call vote.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye. And, and we're not returning to open session.
That's right, not to return to open session. So I had Ms. Ackerman and Ms. Bates.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escavado.
Aye.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, aye.
Okay, we are adjourned to executive session.
Not to return to open session.
Right. Everyone else, have a good night.